We'll call the November meeting of the Belavista City Council to order. Forced order of business will be, will stand for the pledge followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The invocation this evening will be presented by Eric Sloter, the Reverend up at Community Church in Belavista.
Let's pray. Oh God, how good it is that we are free to gather in this place, to be heard, to express our opinions, and to seek wisdom for the good of the city of Belavista. For each one who will come tonight and share, give them wisdom, grace, and may they in all things seek to represent you and themselves well. Tonight, Lord, though, I thank you especially for those who serve our community. I pray your blessing upon them as they serve faithfully, as they serve through difficult times, and I pray that tonight all of us might have a fresh vision for what you desire for this great community. May we ever be part of all that you want to do and be part of your good and very good creation here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Welcome. Roll call vote. I mean roll call. That's the roll call.
Alderman Morgan?
Here.
Alderman Snow?
Here.
Alderman Wozniak?
Here.
Alderman King?
Here.
Alderman Rooney?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We're now to the time of the meeting where we accept citizen input. They can talk to the city council for approximately three minutes to, on any subject having to do with the city. This evening, because we have a public hearing a little later in the meeting concerning a unsafe building down in Old Belavista, we would request that anyone wants to talk about that would wait until the public hearing. But any other subject, now's the time. We had a sign up sheet out there and we'll go down that first. And the first individual is Roger Stout. If he could speak into that microphone there, it will not help the sound in this room, but it will help the sound that goes out over the local TV station.
Roger Stout, I live at 13 Cashin Lane. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm here to, in concern of the 1680 Forest Hills Boulevard rezoning. That is a rezoning that is coming down 279. We already have much between us and the 340 intersection with 279. However, that lot right there is much closer to any residents than anything you've done before. I don't know how many of you have looked at that, but we are much closer on our street behind that lot than anything you have okayed before. I would encourage you to not let this be the impact on our homes, our lifestyle, and our, to be a negative impact on our properties by letting this pass as a C2. It should stay as a residential. I understand the need for the additional revenue here in the city, as we all do, but if you look across the street, everything that's over there, you say, "Well, it's already commercial." There is nothing behind that property across the street on the other side of Forest Hills Boulevard. You have a cemetery. That's the only people that could possibly be borrowed, bothered by noise and light over there. We are, however, very close. So I would implore you to take a really close look at that and to, in the end result, not have a negative impact on our home values and to make sure that you study every aspect of it and certainly in the type of business that you would allow there, because there is no way that it will not impact us due to the fact that it's so close. Thank you for your time.
Representative Sue Scott?
I'm your state representative for the east side of Belavista. However, those of you on the west, I claim you too. So I hope that a lot of good things we do at the state capitol affect you all and it's all good for you. I'm always really proud when I'm in Little Rock to talk about Belavista. I'm always pleased to let everybody know just what good, wonderful, fine, upstanding people that I get to represent. People who have worked very hard and who have retired but have not sat down, people who still get up every day and find a reason to fill their days with goodness. And I'm just so proud of you and I bring you greetings from Governor Bibi and I bring you greetings from our state capitol and I'd like to invite you all to come to Little Rock sometime. Come and visit our state capitol. We'd love to have you come as a group or if two or three of you want to come, I'd give you the same tour that I'd give a hundred of you. So I'm just very pleased. ... be part of Belavista. I've lived in Rogers for forty, almost forty-one years, so Belavista is partly my home too. So thank you very much.
Ralph, and I'm sorry I can't read the last name.
Just like the month of August.
Rog, okay.
Ralph Rogust and I live 14 Cashin Lane and I'm speaking in opposition to the rezoning of 1680 Forest Hills Boulevard. Thank you. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a neighbor who lives at 14 Cashin Lane in direct view and owns property within about 225 feet of the reza, the property that's up for rezoning, I would ask this board for consideration. I know that likely anyone on this board who was in the same situation would probably appear vehemently opposing the rezoning. Like a couple of my neighbors, I and my wife can view this property from the back deck of our home. Should this property be a restaurant, for example, the lights and the noise from the restaurant will directly impact our enjoyment of our, of our home, from the back deck of our property. We can hear a noise from El Pobletto occasionally, even though that's much further away. And as my neighbor Roger Stout mentioned, that, that is in an area that does not even back up against a residential area. Like Roger said, there's also the potential for additional tax sales revenue, and I understand that. Any governmental agency wants additional tax revenue. That's seemingly just what government does. But to mitigate the lighting issue and the sound issue, if this body chooses to go ahead and rezon, which I, I would hope that they would not, but if you do, please consider the aspect of putting some sort of stipulation in that, that might mitigate the light and the noise, perhaps something such as a sound wall, vegetation that would have an umbrella broad enough to, to cut the light from the, from the back and the sides of the property would be very much appreciated. So I would just ask for that consideration at least. And I, I know that the person who bought it can, can get very little money for the property as it sits, as a residential property. To sell it as, as a commercial property is, raises the value astronomically. If, if you'll notice, if you've driven by the property, the person already thinks that this body is rubber stamped. They already have a sign on the property saying for sale, zoned commercial. So they, they obviously already think it's a done deal. And so I would, I would take that into consideration too. Whoever owns it must be a little bit arrogant in that area. In closing, I would just simply ask the board to look at the rezoning as if you live next door. Mike, my neighbor here, his property backs right up against it and, and the lights and the noise will, will considerably impact his lifestyle. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
Next name on the list, Mike Motisep?
I'm Mike Motisep. I live at 6 Cashin Lane. I'm talking about the same property in Forest Hills. These are my neighbors and they're right. This is a very close backup to where you can actually see into that property now. I came here 17 years ago. It was one of the questions I asked, is there any concern about this not becoming residential? Today, there's three residential properties right over there. Don's here, he's got one of them right now. So one of the things I was concerned about is would this ever happen, right, what's getting ready to happen right now? And I was assured it wasn't. This is not going to be anything but residential. What you see is what you've got. I purchased the property I'm in and the two properties next to me, because we like the woods and we like the view. So right off the bat, this is something that I enjoy, Belavista. I enjoy the scenery. I enjoy the lifestyle. I enjoy everything that's going on and I've been here for quite some time. I also understand Ralph's thought. If you're going to have to ever convert something, I'm in hopes that this is your opportunity to say, "This is a neighborhood." This shouldn't be a forced, "We don't know what it's going to be used, tear it down and get ready." I'm in hopes that we can work together. If somebody had to convert it, we're a neighbor, our neighbors go out on Sunday, or on Saturdays, and we do breakfasts pretty much once a month to see what's going on. We talk to each other. We're a very close community. If a builder came in and said, "Look, this is what I want to put here. Here's what I'm going to do it so you won't see much. I'm going to, this is what I'm going to do with the lighting," it would help us. Right now, there's that nervous factor. We have no idea what's going on and it's a very crowded area and it's something that some of us were, you know, even before we bought our homes, we don't want to move here if this kind of action is going to take place. So what I'd like to do is not approve this tonight. And if for some reason in the future you had to, I'd like a builder that would be willing to work with us and say, "Here's why we're going to move ahead. Here's what it's going to look like. Here's what it's going to do to your community." But right now, it looks like it's unguarded and almost anything could go in there. So for everybody that lives on that street and many of us are represented here, we've all talked about it, this is very close to our neighborhood. I would like you to think very closely about what we can do, not just for us, because, you know, we understand progress, but what can you do to keep the beauty there? And as Belavistans, how can we work together with business so that it's not forced, that it's a collaborative effort together? And that's all I'm asking is an understanding so that it, it keeps the lighting down, the sound down, and the view that we see today. If we can maintain that and work together, then that's what the neighbors would want to do, but without that kind of check, we're very nervous about what could happen if you approve this tonight. So I thank you very much for your time and appreciate your thoughts.
Next individual, Ron Simrell.
Good evening. My name is Ron Simrell and I live in Mountain Springs Estates in Belavista. I've lived there about 16 years. And four weeks ago today, my, my son died of an accidental drowning in Lake Locklomen. And since that time, we've been trying to establish a small private cemetery on our property. In order to do this, we have to have our zoning changed back to A1 agricultural, so we're allowed to have a cemetery. So that's what our rezoning is about. And we've been lucky to have Jennifer Bonner here helping us the last few weeks and she's been a great asset to us as far as speeding up the process as much as possible so that we can get our son buried. And it was at the last planning commission meeting that we, we learned that there is going to be an additional delay for us, even if everything is approved by the council, with a 30-day notification and a notification in the paper following a 30-day period. And this, this period, you know, to us is extremely painful, you know? We've already, already waited, you know, a month trying to get our, our son buried and another month is just, we can't hardly imagine it. And so in order for things to proceed for us as quickly as possible tonight, we need approval on the rezon and to waive the next two readings and an amendment to the ordinance so that we can use the emergency clause and push this through without the 30, 30-day notification period. And we have already surveyed, surveyed's not the right word. We had to go around and petition all our neighbors 400 feet in all directions and I've, I've got a signed petition from all of them and we sent 30 certified letters out and to property owners that don't live here. And so far, to my knowledge, we have had not one negative response to it. So I can't imagine that you will have a negative response in the next 30 days either. But if you could just see it in your hearts, it would sure mean a lot to me and my family. And the holidays won't be the same for us, but this would mean a difference. Thank you.
Next individual, Rick Simrell.
Hello. My name is Rick Simrell. I live at 15 Bootley Circle in Belavista. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I've, I have lived in this city for almost 15 years. I'm speaking on the same subject. My father, Ron, and, and my mother and my brother's wife. Dane was my brother. He always liked that area of the property. This is on 10 acres. This is not like the paper said in, in someone's backyard. It's not in the backyard. It's, it's, it can't be seen from, from any other adjoining properties. My brother had, had two double lung transplants in his life. When he was getting his second double lung transplant, my father and him had this dream of creating a pond on their property. They researched it when they were in St. Louis. They went to the library when they weren't at the hospital. They researched it. They got all the information they could. Well, once my brother had his lung transplant, his second, they made it a reality and, and were able to accomplish that. This was a very important place to my brother. He loved to fish there. He loved to bring his family to fish there. He loved to bring his friends. And this spot is overlooking this pond and us as a family believe that this is where he would want to be. I personally would love to be buried with my brother and my family also would like to be buried there. Please find it in your all's hearts to, to try and make this a, as speedy a process as we can if, if you all move for this motion. I pray that you all will. Thank you very much again for being here and thank you for family and friends being here.
That's all the names on the list. Is there anybody in the audience that wasn't aware they needed to sign up to talk to the city council? Anybody else would like to talk to them about any subject for three minutes? Seeing none, we'll move on down the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October 27th, 2014 meeting.
Move to be approved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, we approve the minutes from October 27th as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, approval of minutes for the November 5th special meeting, 2014.
Move to be approved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, we approve the minutes from November 5th. All in favor, raise your right hand. Moving on to next item, a mayor's report. Not too many things to talk about, I believe, and I hope all of you understand that tomorrow is the final day of the special election, so get out if you want to say so in who the next mayor and one of your aldermen will be. It's an important election for Belavista. The only other item I'll mention is we'll have a couple of discussions through the agenda, one on trash pickup, which shows as a resolution, but we won't be ready to do that, so the agenda will be just a discussion on that item. And then the last item discussion is one that started on our last Monday's meeting and that's the credit possible for ACC permit fees and I'll have a handout for those two issues. Moving on on the agenda, the monthly financial report. You all received that through the iPad process probably about a week ago. Comments, questions concerning the October monthly financial statement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the financial statement as presented for October. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Emergency Management Committee, anything, Mr. Rooney?
I guess we met the past couple of weeks rather than have a regular meeting. I'll read a report here that was submitted by our fire chief, Steve Sims, on November 6th. Six members of the Emergency Management Committee and two visitors visited the Lancaster and Knighton Drive area to talk about fire wise. Eight addresses were selected on Lancaster Drive that met criteria for extreme and high-risk wildfire. During that business, we met with three individuals and we were able to discuss and hand out fire wise material with good results noted. Six addresses were selected on Knighton Drive that were considered a high risk and members were able to make contact with some of the residents and handed out some fire wise material. On November 18th, three members and one visitor visited Kensington, Rompton, Basleton, Prompton Lane and Basleton Circle that met criteria for an extreme fire risk. We were able to visit with a couple of the residents and hand out fire wise material to each of the resident. And one of the residents we visited stopped by the station and visited with Steve Sims further about the risk. We're very concerned of these fire risks in the community and we are going to continue as the Emergency Management Committee to work on this and the fire department is going to send mailings out and contact these people. Some of them have wood roof sheds shakes, some brush up against the, against the homes and we'd like to get this taken care of, at least cause the attention of the homeowner and ask them to consider doing away with the brush or whatever the fire danger is. We're going to meet at nine o'clock on the 3rd of December at the Fire Department Training Hall if anybody's interested in coming. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Rooney? Moving on, we will open a special hearing, public hearing for the proposal that is being considered by the council concerning condemnation in order to raise and remove a dilapidated, unsafe and nuisance structure owned by Richard and Patricia Philpott at 13627 Lookout Drive. Is there anyone here that would like to be heard at the public hearing concerning that If you could come up and talk into the microphone again, it's not for the people here, it's for the TV, the local TV station. And if you could give us your name and address when you get there. Push the curtain, can't you push the curtain in and get by?
This setup is not mediating. It's not much of a help.
Yeah, and I'm not joking when I say that. Hey Jim, can you lower that microphone?
My name's Linda Sanders. I live at 2 Terrance A Circle here in Belavista. I'm former owner of this property I sold to Richard and Patricia Philpott. And I don't know what I'm supposed to do. I, I understand that it is unsafe. I haven't been there for quite a while. I talked to Patricia the other day and she said she had no intentions of coming here and talking to you folks about it. So where do we go from here?
Well, if nobody talks about it, there's not a lot we can do about it except continue to move on. We've made as many notifications, I believe, as we have to, or do we have to go through one more notification process?
The notifications have happened. This is the public hearing, so the council is to hear whomever wants to speak and whatever they want to say and then close that and then you'll move on to a resolution and decide whether you want to adopt that resolution or not to raise and remove, order raising and removal.
Okay. I'm, I'm not real familiar with a lot of condemnation measures and what you have to do. I, as a former property owner and carrying the note on this for the Philpotts, am I liable for, if you do go and condemn it and say, "I'm going to tear it down," am I liable to pay for having it condemned?
Let me answer that, Mayor, if I can. First of all, you need to seek your own private legal advice as to what your obligations might be.
Okay.
I can tell you what the legal effect is going to be. If the council votes to adopt this resolution to raise and remove, then a, then a period of time, I think, I believe it's 30 days, will occur in which the owners of the property and you being lien holder have also been notified to take the property down. If that does not happen, then the city can take that action and would put lien on the property, collect it through real estate tax, but the city would then be able to take legal recourse in order to collect that. That could operate as a lien on that property.
Okay.
And it's, it would be treated as a tax lien, so it would be priority over your mortgage.
But I, I could continue to, say if I take it back from these people, I could continue to, to try and sell the property?
Ma'am, you need to talk to an attorney about that.
Oh, that's right.
But once, once they vote, there's going to be a very short window and they're going to order it taken down. There's not going to be any more time, no more fixing it up. It's got to be taken down.
No, it, I, from what I, I talked to my, my- No, it, I, from what I, I talked to my, my realtor, and he said it was in bad shape. Like I say, I haven't been over that way, because I moved over to on the west side.
You have a mortgage interest, so you may, you need to speak to your own attorney about a foreclosure.
Sure.
Before, again, I, that's, that's, you need to, you need to talk to a lawyer, okay? I'm a lawyer, you need to talk to a lawyer.
Okay, very good. That's just, that's what, that's what I needed to know.
The city is going to eliminate the hazard. That's, that's what's going to happen.
Okay, because I, I can't go over there and take it down myself. I'm, I'm disabled, so I'm not going to be able to kick the boards down. I'm sorry.
Well, like, as, as our lawyer indicated, there will be, if it passes.
Right.
And this is an if. Depends on what happens in this particular resolution. But if it passes, there will be notice given to owner and anybody that has a monetary interest in that piece of property that they have so long for it to disappear.
Very good.
If that does not happen in that time, then probably the city will come in and it will disappear. And then it will be put in a lien process, and it will be held against the property, and that would have to be paid, probably with the taxes and those kind of things through the normal system for taking care of liens.
Okay.
So that is the process.
That's what I needed to know.
And this is just the beginning of it, as to whether the council is ready to take the action that says, yes, it needs to be gone.
Sure. Okay, well, I'll just wait your, your answer then. Thank you.
Okay.
May I have a question? My only question is, do you have the resources to have it demolished?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay.
I don't.
Any other questions, comments, discussion concerning the public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing. So the public hearing is hereby closed, and we'll move on to the other items on the city council's agenda for this evening. Moving on to the next item, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules this evening and, and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, we read the, suspend the rules and read all ordinances and resolutions by title only. One last chance for discussion on that issue. Motion. Roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rules.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, six zero.
Moving on in the agenda to unfinished business. The first item is an ordinance I will read by title only. Amending the City of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands commonly known as 1265 Forest Hills Boulevard, parcel number 16-70211, or 001, from C1, which is neighborhood commercial, to C2, light commercial, and for other purposes. This is the third reading of this particular ordinance. Comments, questions, discussion concerning the ordinance?
Mayor, I have some.
Jerry.
I have expressed opposition to this ordinance in the past, and I will do so again tonight. No one disagrees that we need all the commercial property that we, that we can have available for the tax impact for Bella Vista, as we're all aware. Our streets, our street situations is in, streets are in a difficult situation, and those things can only be corrected by tax revenue. I, in this particular situation, this is already commercial property. There have been individuals here from neighbors that have been here to speak against the rezoning of this piece of property. I have yet to see anyone appear before this council to speak on behalf of rezoning this piece of property. So therefore, to me, to rezone this piece of property from one commercial category to the next, there should be a need for that, and there is no need. No one has expressed a need for that other than simply the availability of commercial property, which, as I said, this already is commercial property. And if you will remember, not too far away, also on this same highway, not too awful long ago, there was a piece of property that was rezoned commercial. And because of the situation, because of the, some families that involved in a property exchange and purchase, got into a predicament where if this property remained commercial, they could not move into it as a residential property. So we had to rezone this commercial property, or we did rezone this commercial property back to a residential property. So therefore, I would encourage my fellow council members to vote against this, this ordinance tonight.
Just one comment I would like to make concerning whether someone would be here in support of the rezoning. Rezoning is not supposed to take place because something is going to happen to property. Rezoning should be the best use of the particular property. If we get to the point where we only rezone when some final decision is made as to how the property's to be used, that's almost spot rezoning. That's not something we as a city or a city council should be involved in. So I'm not sure that there would be anybody coming and talking for it, because it hasn't been identified as to what it could or might be used for specifically. So it is a com, all of our rezoning should be taken in accordance with that kind of a process, not what is it that's going to be there because of the rezoning. And I would also have to mention that I think maybe we didn't do a great job in the issue that you're talking about when we rezoned for some special interests. Back at that time, we already did it. But to continue doing that is probably not the way the City of Bella Vista wants to get known for rezoning. Anyone else? Who else wants to talk about that particular ordinance?
I believe the, I believe the owners made their case at the planning commission meetings that I have attended. And I understand what you're saying, but they had been approached by a potential buyer for a drive-in restaurant, which would require the C2 zoning.
Again, I would caution, that's not the reason we ought to be doing zoning issues. It's the best use of that land. And I think we all understand that there's not much land in Bella Vista that can be used for commercial. And I would also let the folks know up here that I think there are two reasons for commercial. One is the tax revenue, but the other is to provide a service to citizens in Bella Vista. We've got 26,000 people here who, for most services, need to go five miles to another city to obtain those services. I'm not sure that's what a city the size of 26,000 wants to be known for.
One more last comment, Mayor.
Shoot.
As we all know, the planning, our planning department recommended denial of this particular piece of property to rezoning because of the safety issues, because of the traffic issues, which it is in a difficult traffic area. That is a, an unsafe or not a safe, but a questionable safe area. The, the other commercial properties that are located nearby, it's sometimes difficult to get out of those without pulling out in front of someone because of that particular curves and the, the way the highway is routed through that particular area. And that will become, that is a high-traffic area. It's becoming probably even more of a traffic area. And I did not mean to imply that there should be some decision made as to what is going to go on that piece of property before it's rezoned. All I'm saying is it's already commercial. So again, what is the purpose and the need for rezoning it to another commercial level when it's already commercial? That's it. Made my case.
I would like to point out that the planning commission decision was a tie vote, a three to three, which defaults to a no recommendation. But I don't consider three to three a definitive vote. I consider that a tie vote, and three of the members were for it and three were not.
Anyone else? Any other comments? This is the third reading, so if someone wants to, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, we approve the ordinance as presented. One last chance for discussion. Comments? Roll call vote on the ordinance as presented.
Alderman Snow?
No.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson, do you wish to break the tone?
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Next item on the agenda is another ordinance, prohibiting the discharge of contaminants into the stormwater drainage system and for other purposes. This is the third reading of this particular ordinance. Comments, questions, discussion concerning that ordinance, proposed ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, we approve the ordinance based on the third reading. One last chance for comments, questions, discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote on that ordinance as presented.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
Moving on to item number C under unfinished business is an ordinance I will read by title only. Establishing a records retention policy for the City of Bella Vista and for other purposes. This is the second reading of this particular ordinance.
Motion to approve with the request that we waive the third reading. Second.
That's not really in order.
Okay.
There needs to be a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to third and final reading.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
The motion is to suspend the rules and move to third reading, not to vote for the ordinance, just to suspend the rules and move to third reading. Everybody understands the motion that's on the floor? Any questions, comments, discussion? Roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rules and move to third reading.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
I will read the ordinance for its third reading. Establishing a records retention policy for the City of Bella Vista and for other purposes. Third reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, we approve the ordinance upon third reading. Any comments, discussion, questions? Roll call vote on the motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
Item number D under unfinished business is another ordinance I will read by title only. Providing for the issuance, denial, and revocation of parade and special event permits and for other purposes. This is the second reading of this particular ordinance.
Mayor, at the work session previously and at our prior meeting, there was discussion about offering an amendment as it relates to young children participating in the parade and supervision. In the packet, I drafted a proposed amendment, which I inserted in there for you, for someone to move to offer, if that's what you choose to do. The, let me get it in front of me.
Someone on the council want to make the motion on that?
Amendment is to Section 5F, and what it would do is it, I'll just read it to you. F, no child, this would be the amendment. No child under the age of 10 years shall be permitted to participate in a parade or special event without being accompanied by an adult at least 18 years of age who will be responsible for such child. For purposes of this subsection, one adult may supervise no more than 10 children.
Entertain a motion to make that amendment to the ordinance, proposed ordinance?
Since I introduce the ordinance, Mayor Allen will make the motion to the amendment.
Second.
Then moved and seconded that we amend the ordinance as currently provided in the agenda or in the packet. Any further discussion on the amendment? And that amendment is to amend Section 5F so that no child under the age of 10 will be permitted to participate in a parade or special event without being accompanied by an adult at least 18 years of age who will be responsible for such child. For purposes of this subsection, one adult may supervise no more than 10 children. Comments, questions, discussion concerning the amendment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll have the roll call vote on the amendment to the parade ordinance.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
The ordinance has been amended. Hearing nothing, we will move it forward to third reading, next council meeting. Moving on to new business. Item number A is a resolution condemning and ordering the raising and removal of a dilapidated, unsafe, and nuisance structure owned by Richard and Patricia Philpott at 13627 Lookout Drive. T. Allen and Linda Sanders and Old Bella Vista Property Owners Association are lien holders in the City of Bella Vista. Comments, questions, discussion concerning that resolution? The resolution we just had the public forum on about 10 minutes ago.
Mayor, just for purposes of the, of the record, in your packet, there are several photographs of the property at issue, some reports regarding some of the safety issues which have been located on the property, and just to make sure you're aware of that, so it'd be reflected in the record.
We did discuss quite a few of those things at the work session last Monday.
Move the resolution be approved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, we approve the resolution as presented. Any further discussion, comments? Recognizing that if in fact it goes through and the property owners or lien holders don't tear it down, the city will probably spend money to tear it down. Comments, questions?
Just, I want to make sure, the, the owners are who are ordered to tear it down, not the lien holders.
Well, okay.
The lien holders have a right to notice, so.
Gotcha.
Just so that's clear.
Jerry?
A comment and a bit of a question also. Wouldn't it probably not be less expensive to the property owners and the lien holders if they were to make arrangements to take that property down rather than having the city do it?
No guarantee. Don't know what kind of bids they would get compared to what a city would get, so I can't, I wouldn't even guess on that one. Don't know.
Just a thought for them to possibly entertain.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote on that resolution.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six zero.
Next item of business, item B under new business, is an ordinance I'll read by title only. Amending the City of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands known as 14829 Oak Hill Road, parcel number 16-43264-000, from R3 to A1, and for other purposes. This is the first reading of this particular ordinance.
Motion to suspend the rules and move it to third reading tonight.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to suspend the rules and go to the third reading, this, go through the second and third readings this evening. Comments, questions, discussion concerning that motion?
I, I do have a.
Not the ordinance, just the motion.
I have a question on the order of how we do this, if we want to enact the emergency clause.
Emergency clause? We can do that after this.
After.
Can, yeah. You can do it either way, but this motion's already on the floor.
All right.
Comments, questions concerning? Comments, questions concerning the motion to suspend the rules and go to third reading this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we'll have the roll call vote on just the motion, suspend the rules and go to third reading.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six to zero.
We're now at the third reading, and I'll read the ordinance by title only for the third reading. Amending the city of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands known as 14829 Oak Hill Road, parcel number 16-43264-000, from R3 to A1 and for other purposes. That's the third reading. Comments, discussion concerning that ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That would be...
The emergent?
To adopt.
That's motion to adopt, it's on the third reading, that would be in order, yes.
That would be in order. What we did skip is if somebody's talking about an emergency clause, and I'm not, but somebody might be, we need to...
I move we do that.
Yes.
Hang on a second, there's a motion on the floor, so...
If somebody would withdraw that motion, that would allow further proceedings.
Done.
All right.
Motion is drawn.
Whoever made the second should withdraw that as well.
Withdrawn.
We should not throw that.
So there is no motion on the floor. What is it the councils druthers? What would we like to do next?
We'd like to inject the emergency clause.
Second.
There's a... I gave a... Wrote a memo to all of you, I think you got it on the email. It contains a proposed emergency clause. It does need to say section 3 rather than section 2 because there is already a section 2 in the proposal. Let me just tell you, because it's been a topic of discussion and just so we're clear and so that the audience knows what's going on. Normally, when an ordinance like a rezoning is adopted, it's subject to referendum, and it takes 30 days before it takes effect in order to give time for a referendum petition to be gathered. You can adopt an emergency clause in order to declare an emergency in the city, that passage of an ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. You can do that, it will become immediately effective, and that does not preclude a referendum petition, it just changes the order of things a little bit. It becomes immediately effective, there could theoretically still be a referendum petition in 30 days, there could still be an election. If that election were to turn out opposed to this proposal, then it would be effectively repealed. So it does accelerate the adoption of the program, you do have to declare an emergency, you have to state the reason for the emergency, and it has to be for reasons of public peace, health, and safety. In light of all that, the best shot I gave you in an emergency clause reads as follows. Proposed amendment, section 3, emergency clause. The city council of the city of Bella Vista determines that the need to allow agricultural uses on the above described property is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. Therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall become immediately effective upon its passage and approval as provided by law. Emergency clauses are voted on separately, so even if you move to amend and you go ahead and tack this on to your proposal, when it comes to final vote, you'll have a final vote on the ordinance and another final vote on whether to adopt the emergency clause. Emergency clauses have to be approved by two-thirds of you, that's not an issue for us because the majority is two-thirds. We only have six, it takes four, four of six is two-thirds. So that happens in cities with larger councils, but just so that you all... Everyone knows what the rules are, there you go.
The mayor cannot vote to pass an emergency clause because he's not part of the two-thirds.
That's correct.
Emergency clauses normally have a reason stated that would describe what the peace, safety, or welfare issue is. You will notice that this particular emergency clause does not have that. It just restates the obvious.
It states the reason is that the necessity to change to agricultural uses, that is the legal factual reason that is stated. And so it does meet the basic requirement of the law.
I'd like to move that we adopt this emergency clause.
Second.
Let me, if I may, Mayor, the motion at this point needs to be to amend the proposal to include or add an emergency clause.
So moved.
If that vote is tied, the mayor may vote to add it to the proposal. When it comes time for the final vote on enactment, the mayor may not vote if it is tied, okay?
So, to clarify, we had a motion to amend, to insert the emergency clause, made by Alderman Rooney, Alderman Wasniak. Your comments, are they enough to clarify, or do we have to have them withdraw that motion?
No, no, that motion's in order.
Okay, okay.
That's what's before the council at this point.
So the motion is to amend the ordinance and add the emergency clause. Any comments, questions, discussion concerning that motion to add the emergency clause to the ordinance as it's presented now? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote to add the emergency clause to that ordinance.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan, excuse me?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six to zero.
We now have an ordinance on the floor that has the third reading. We're now looking for entertaining a motion to do something with that ordinance.
Will we adopt it?
Second.
Motion to move... Or to adopt the ordinance as amended. Any comments, questions, discussion concerning the ordinance as amended with the emergency clause included? Recall, you're not voting on the emergency clause yet, we will have a special vote on the emergency clause. This is just to pass or not pass the ordinance as presented. Comments, questions, discussion concerning the ordinance?
Mayor, after all this discussion, I would only ask, our only question is, after all of this, what is the potential for what our actions... Does our actions create any additional potential harm or grief for this family as a result of what we're doing tonight?
The only risk that I see would be the chance of a referendum petition, just like went through with Walmart. If that were to happen, we would approve it, the action could occur. I couldn't tell you what would happen if it got disapproved by a vote. That's the only risk that I see.
It would be litigation is what it would be.
It would probably go to court. It probably has not happened many times, and it would be a courtroom battle then over the issues. So we're opening up a chance of litigation for whatever occurs after the fact, because the fact that we put in the emergency clause does not take away the referendum potential. And I stress "potential."
So the probabilities of additional issues for this family are slim and none?
That's your determination and what you need to consider in voting. I'm not going to tell you what I think on that one.
I understand.
Where am I?
We have a motion to adopt.
There's a motion in a second.
As amended.
Motion to adopt the ordinance as amended. So that motion is still on the floor. We will then have another motion on the emergency clause. So to adopt the ordinance, any comments? Roll call vote on adopting the ordinance?
As amended.
As amended.
Okay. Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six to zero.
We will now entertain a motion to adopt the emergency clause in the ordinance we just passed. And this is required by state statute to go through this process, this is not...
The Constitution.
Well, the Constitution, close enough.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the emergency clause in the ordinance we just passed. Any comments, questions, discussion concerning that? Roll call vote on the emergency clause in the ordinance amending the zoning for 14829 Oak Hill Road.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, six to zero.
Moving on to item C under new business is an ordinance I will read by title only. Amending the city of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands known as 1680 Forest Hills Boulevard, parcel number 16-70272-002, from R1 to C2 and for other purposes. This is the first reading of this ordinance. Comments, questions, discussion concerning that ordinance, proposed ordinance? No comments, no questions? Seeing none, we will move that ordinance forward for second reading at the next city council meeting in December. Next regular city council meeting in December. Item number D under new business is a resolution I will read by title only. Approving a self-funded health insurance benefit plan through Cigna Insurance for city employees. Comments, questions, discussion concerning that resolution?
Motion to approve.
Been moved and seconded, the resolution be approved. One last chance for comments, discussion? Roll call vote on the resolution approving a self-funded... Or no, yeah, approving a self-funded health insurance benefit plan through Cigna Insurance. Roll call vote.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six to zero.
Next item under new business is a resolution that we're not quite ready to talk about, but we will discuss it, and I do have some information to send our pass out to you. And this subject deals with the new trash rates for 2015. If we recall at our work session last week, I talked about that, the fact that we're coming up to the end of our two-year contract where the rates stayed the same for two years. We now are to a point where we need to negotiate with Allied, or Republic as they are now known, for the new rate structure. In talking with the individual who deals with municipalities, we've had an ongoing discussion for a week, 10 days. I think I'm to a point where I will... I'm ready to recommend what we do for residential rates. I'm not quite at that point with commercial rates. What I pass out to you is a memo that you can take a look at, and I show there what the 2014 rates are today for residential. That's on this page, looks like this, on this side of the page. I think you're on the wrong side, Alan.
No, just to see what's on.
On this page. So what you're seeing is the 2004 rates at 920. I'm proposing that we go to 949. The street repair rate, which is part of the rate, goes from those 28733 to 2.91. Sales tax goes up by whatever you multiply times 8.5. You see, the basic total rate for the month goes from 1310 to 1345. As I mentioned, there has been no rate change since January 2013. At that time, with the new contract, the rates went down approximately $2 a month. The standard CPI, just the base CPI in 2013 and 14, has gone up 3.2 percent. Went up 1.5 in '13 and about 1.7 in '14. That's the raise they're requesting. I have no real good reason to dispute that that's probably needed, so I'm recommending that we go with that rate. The negotiator from their side indicated that we would increase the commercial rates by the same amount. I have a little more problem with raising those by 3.2, so I'm still talking with them. On the backside of the piece of paper that we started talking about, looks something like this. Down at the bottom, I took the commercial rates and raised them 3.2 percent just to show you what they would look like for the commercial activities going across the board, depending on what size and how many times a week it's picked up. We come out with odd pennies, odd cents all the time. I would much rather have a better structure that kind of rounds some of those numbers off, probably down. So I'm still in the negotiation phase with Republic on that. We will have a special meeting December 4th before we have our work session on that evening to take this up, and hopefully by then, or by then, I will have firm, solid numbers. Comments, questions, discussion concerning any of those numbers, any of the things we've talked about?
I'm just a little concerned. I know what the fuel prices have dropped considerably, and that certainly is a large portion of the costs of this... Of what they're doing, I just...
Well, they have labor, their labor costs are probably higher than their fuel costs. Their tipping fees are going up around the country, so I guess I don't think it's too far out compared to what the CPI has gone up for individuals' expenses. And that's what we ended up with, that's what the 3.2 comes out to be. That's better than the 3.73 we started with, which was their number from a trash CPI, trash utility CPI. Jerry, looks like you got a question?
Just a comment.
Shoot.
In summary, for the public, for our residents, it equates to $4.20 a year, right?
It'd be .35 times 12 if that's what that comes out, 350, 70, probably 420, right?
420 a year.
Yep. And that's two years, it has not gone up since January 2013.
And this rate will be good for how long?
One year. From now on, it's one year per time. So it'll be negotiated by whomever is the next lucky person to get to negotiate, and I'll explain to them right now, it's a little difficult to negotiate when neither person doing the negotiation has final say. I come back to you and they go back to their boss, so makes negotiation just a little difficult. But that's what I'm going to recommend for the trash rate for residences, and I will come up with numbers and show you the chart or have the chart by December 4th. If anyone has questions or comments or is upset about it and doesn't want to talk about it here, why holler at me, I'll be at work every day except Thanksgiving and Friday. And you could probably even get me then if you got my cellphone number.
Mayor, if you want to do this next month to stay straight procedurally, I think we did have a proposed resolution. I believe what you would need to entertain is a motion to table this to the next regular session for further consideration.
Okay, there's nothing in the resolution, so it almost has to be tabled, there's no numbers in it.
But anyway, there's something on the agenda, so we need to...
Entertain a motion to table till December 4 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we table this resolution to December 4.
Is that the next regular session, Mayor?
No.
Well, it can be discussed at the work session, but it'll need to be on the next regular session agenda.
Why? Can't do it as a special meeting?
If you want to call a special meeting, you can do that.
It's called already, we're going to do it.
Okay, very good.
I got to get this done.
Sorry, you're stepping ahead of me.
We have to get this done, so don't slow me down too much.
I'll try not to. I've already caused enough problems this week.
Any other comments, questions on that motion? Roll call vote.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasniak?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six to zero.
Moving on to the next item under new business. Item number F, resolution I'll read by title only. Requesting the presence of city department heads at city council work sessions to provide information and answer questions related to the particular department's items on the council agenda. You want to talk that one, Jerry? I think that one's coming from you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I will make a few comments regarding this particular resolution. In our work session, it was pointed out that if, the mayor being the chief administrator of the, of the city and of our department heads, that if there are any questions regarding the department head or whatever's happening in the city, the mayor's in a position to answer that question, and you can go to him at any time and ask that question, and that is correct. The mayor is the chief administrator and the, the person responsible for the department heads and can answer those questions. But doing so, unless that's done in a public presence, excludes the council as well as the public from whatever that question or concern might be. We've had some issues in the past, concerns about Freedom of Information Act and things taking place without, in the presence of the, of the public, which asking questions of the department heads at a council or at a work session provides that input. Also, the council, the mayor is the chief administrator, but the council is also the keeper of the checkbook. These department heads may not report to us, but they work for us also. And I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask that a department head be at a work session in order to be able to answer whatever questions that the council might have regarding their department and do so in the presence of the public as well as the other council members.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, I do not agree, Alderman Snow. I don't believe that we can expect the department heads to come to a meeting and, and answer questions that we may have about things that are on the agenda. I think that we received the agenda long before the council meeting, and we could be in contact with the mayor, whoever. For example, the treasurer, I can't imagine her bringing all of the books and whatnot to the workshop meeting so we could, she could answer our questions. I think if we have questions, we should contact these people prior to the meeting and see what information we could get. And also, I have a pamphlet here, and I won't read it all, but it dictates the duties of aldermen, and it's certainly not to manage the day-to-day operations of the city. That is, the mayor's job, and I don't think that we should be involved in that.
Any other comments?
May I make a suggestion that if there is something on the agenda for either the work session or the council that would pertain to a particular department head, that that department head be requested to be there? That's not unreasonable. There's a lot of times a question may come up in the process of the meeting and discussion that wouldn't be anticipated or be able to answer in advance. And most department heads, I know Chief Farmer and Chief Sims can pretty well take things and give you an answer within a couple seconds. They're pretty good that way. I would think that the other department heads would be able to answer general operational questions the same way. And if there is something on the agenda that would pertain to them and their particular, you know, venue, whether it's libraries, streets, financial or whatever, that we would be able to request them to be at the meeting. Not necessarily have everybody have to be there every time, but just in those cases where it would be pertinent to have a, a one-on-one and have them available for public comment, as Jerry said also.
Any other comments?
Would that be more agreeable to you? I mean, that's not mocking managing to me, that's just, it's easier to ask a question face-to-face with someone when it pops up.
The mayor has a phone, he's certainly receptive to any of us coming in with any questions.
And that's not my issue, Dick.
We've all attended these classes on guides book that I have here for municipal officials, and in there it says the mayor oversees the day-to-day activities of the city and supervises department heads, not us, not the aldermen.
Correct.
And we should not be doing that. And I think we should be communicating with the mayor, who's ever head of the city, with our questions.
My position on it, and I recognize I'm leaving, so makes little say what I think, but I think it should be up to the mayor as to whether he feels he needs the backup. I bring in the various department heads if I believe I need them. I've got Department Two in charge here, you know, because I wasn't sure I could answer a planning question. But I'll take on most of the street department questions. I work with those people just about as much as, as anybody else. I'll take on the library questions. If I can't answer them, I really don't believe the person you're going to have here from the department's going to be able to answer them either. Now, that's my position, my opinion. I think it should be up to the mayor as to whether he wants that particular person here to talk to the city council or not on whatever issue we're talking about. And I'm not saying that you can't have the questions and the discussion take place at a council meeting. All you need to do is let me know what it is you want in the way of information, and it will be at the next open meeting. It'll be presented either by me. I would assume the next mayor may want to operate that way, but maybe not. Maybe the next mayor will want somebody to support him on each and every issue. I don't think I need that kind of force here. I think I can answer most of your questions. I don't think I've missed too many of them in answering. So that's my position on it.
And all of our meetings, including the workshops, are public meetings. They are open to the public.
So I really think it should be left up to the mayor as to whether he needs that support, whether he needs some in-depth information that he doesn't think he has at his fingertips, can't discuss it, you know, down to the nitty-gritty. And on those issues, just like we do now, those department heads will show up.
I've also found the department heads very approachable for any questions that I've had directly.
They better be.
That was never the question in case.
Any other comments, questions concerning that resolution? Roll call, vote on that. Oh, I need a motion, that's right. I do need something on the floor.
Move that it be approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution as presented. Roll call, vote.
Alderman Wasnack?
Nope.
Alderman Rooney?
No.
Alderman King?
I'm not abstaining on this one till we can talk it over more.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Morgan?
No.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Motion carries, or defeated, one to five, one to, yeah.
One to four with an abstention.
One abstention.
Moving on to item G under new business. And I'll read that resolution by title only. Approving a contract with Wittenberg, Deloney, and Davidson Incorporated for design, development, and bidding services related to construction of a fire station on State Highway two seventy-nine. As we discussed at the, at the work session, this is similar to what we did, I guess, two months ago now for the street department. And what this contract does is get the design work done to a level where the information can be taken from this contract and put out to bid. They will actually do the putting out for bid and present the bids back to us in their recommended format, whatever they think is the best bid that comes in for this particular project. So it's completing the design, down to the nitty-gritty to go out and get bids, getting the bid taken care of, coming back with a suggestion that this is the best bidder.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution as presented. Comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote on the resolution as presented.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnack?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, six to zero.
I'll read the next item. Item H under new business is a resolution, I'll read it by title only. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to renew the contract with Cooper Communities Incorporated for the rental of space for the city of Bella Vista Street Department for the period of December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. As we discuss, at the work session.
We didn't.
We didn't discuss this one? This one wasn't at the work session?
No.
Certainly, I talked about it, I must have. At some point in time, I've talked about it, that we're not going to get the street department built, and we got to have someplace to house the, the street department. So this is the street department location down there behind the X T H Rogers building, back in that area, and between that and the, and the cement plant, the Cooper Cement Plant.
I think we all know the purpose of the, whether we discuss it at work session or not.
Okay.
We all know the purpose of it, so I'm moving.
Okay, I know we've talked about it sometime in the past, so this is a resolution, and what I will point out is that I'm only renewing it right now, or suggesting renewing it now for the first six months. I really believe that based on, on what we're hearing from our designer and our architect engineering firm, it's probably going to take longer than that, and we may have to renew it one more time, but I'm still hopeful that we can get out of there ASAP. So I'm sure we'll be in there for six months. Hopefully by then, we'll have a firmer date as to when we can get out and, and not spend any more months there than we have to.
Move that it be approved.
One comment. My understanding was at the current rate.
Current rate, same rate, extended just like what is, and we've done this. This will be the fourth time that we've done it. There was one error on that, on the resolution.
On the addendum.
On the addendum, on the lease, and it, it said third addendum, but you need to pen and ink that to the fourth addendum. It's really the fourth addendum, and they, I'm sure copied from the last one.
The draft that went out in the packet says fourth addendum on it, so...
The first paragraph refers to the third addendum.
Yeah.
Okay.
Down there, we got two places that says third, so those need to be changed to fourth. So we have the motion on the floor?
I need a second.
Did we get a second?
I seconded.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the resolution as presented. One last chance for comments. Roll call, vote.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Wasnack?
Yes.
Alderman Rooney?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, six to zero.
Last item on the agenda, action item, is discussion that we started at the, at the work session concerning the potential credit, I guess, for ACC fees paid. And I, the question at the time was, was what are we talking about? How many fees? What, what areas are we talking about? So this is a listing, and you see the kind of permits down the left-hand column. You see the cost for the ACC permit in the next column. You see the city permit cost, and in those places where you see an average number, like sixty-three dollars average. The reason that average is used there is our fees are based on a square footage, so we're giving you an estimate of what the average fee would be for the various permits of that particular time that come in. And then the number of permits is in the last column. The total amount that the city collected is in that middle column. So you can see what impact, depending on what type of credit or what fees you want to consider giving the ACC credit for. You can figure it out as easily as I can, I guess, by multiplication there. If you give so much, that's how much the city would lose, or give up. I don't mean lose, would, would give up in the way of fees. So I don't know where you want to go now with this discussion, whether you want to study this a little bit, think about it, work on it at the next work session, whether you want to talk about it some more tonight, whether you have any other questions that you need answers for or information about.
Well, since I brought it up, obviously, now that we have the fee structure, it obviously needs to be discussed more, I think.
I agree.
I don't know that we can take any action on it immediately.
Well, no, I'm not looking for action.
No, I'm not.
When you say discuss, what is it you want to discuss, and how do you want to go about the discussion?
Well, number one is the, what is the, are the council members, what are their feelings in, in regards to this double charge for a variety of permits in Bella Vista?
Well, the taxpayers have to pay the employees to inspect these. And they're trying to revamp some of that money, obviously.
I'm, I'm sorry, what, you said, how was that again?
The point you were making, Richard?
The point I'm making is that we are going to have to charge some type of fee, or I'm going to have to pay for your fence inspection, or your garage, or whatever, if we're not going to charge a fee because our employees are paid salaries to go and do it. We employ people to do this, is what I'm trying to say.
I don't know, I don't think there's any disagreement about that. I, any disagreement that our employees have to be paid for the services they provide to the city.
We ought to do away with the fees?
Sir?
You're thinking we should do away with the fees?
No, I'm not thinking we should do away with the fees, but do you think that it is, that it's equitable or fair to the citizens of Bella Vista, that they got to pay a double fee to build a fence? You got to pay, you got to get a permit from the city, and you also got to get a permit from the ACC? Seventy-five dollars to, for a permit to build a fence in the city of Bella Vista? Down the line there. Storm shelter, pool, not that there's many pools are going to be built, but a variety of fees that the public, the citizens of Bella Vista, are being double paid, are having to double pay for. Do you think, again, do you think that's equitable? That's any problem?
Well, Mayor, do you have any idea, do we have any idea what other communities are charging for these fees?
The city permit fees are down probably below average in Northwest Arkansas. We just reduced city permit fees, hmm, probably about sixteen months ago, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen months ago, and we attempted to get them down as low as we thought we could within reason. So the city fees are, are certainly in line with, with nearby areas.
I don't think there's any problem with the city fees. I don't, I don't, there's not a problem with the, with the city fee. My only question, or my only concern was, is that the public be possibly, if it was affordable, or if it was not a sufficient decline in revenue to the planning department, is that the public be given credit on the city fee for the fee that they have to pay to the ACC?
I guess my question is, is the ACC and the city doing the same inspection?
No, no, the ACC is more interested in aesthetics. The city really has little in the way of aesthetics. We don't color about color of paint. We don't care necessarily about the material used, as long as there's not a safety issue with material. But I mean, we don't care if it's wrought iron, but...
I understand that's part of it, but is the safety basically the same? In other words, it has to have the correct foundation?
You'd have to deal with the ACC. I don't know what they inspect on, for sure.
That's why we asked for this. There's going to be a lot more questions before this is looked at.
Well, that's what I want to know. What are the questions? You want to know what the ACC inspects for? Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, I wanted, yeah, I want to know, you know, is, is the safety issue that's in both these the same?
What is the...
You know, I mean, I don't care about the color, but is the structures going to stand up, basically?
I don't think they go to safety too much. They don't have safety inspectors, the ACC, but I don't tell them what to inspect for, and neither do you. That's the ACC world, that's a different world.
My question is, what is the service to the public? That's who we are supposed to be concerned about, is the citizens, the public in Bella Vista?
What the city services to the public is the only thing that we can answer. We can't answer what the ACC is.
I can attempt to find out what the ACC inspects for. Would that help you?
Yeah.
Is that what you're looking for? What the ACC inspects for?
What is the benefit to the public?
Well, I'm not going to try to defend the ACC benefit if that's... Well, I'm not going to try to defend the ACC benefit, if that's what you're asking me. I've been down that road before, I was with them from 92 on, so I know what I think the benefit is. They're not going to like it.
You go to our neighboring communities, and they, all these new subdivisions they're putting in, they all have a similar type thing, they have their homeowners associations, and they do the same things so that they can enforce laws that the city will not enforce, and is unable to enforce, all these regulations, and they charge also, and they do it for that reason.
So we go on record then, Mr. Rooney, is you supporting a double charge for all the fees in Bella Vista then? That's basically what you've said.
I support the POA, I moved here, I knew the dues were, I knew what I had to pay, and I support what the city's doing.
Not a prob, get the POA fees, not a problem, that's not, that's entirely a different situation.
Was in the covenants when you moved here and purchased your home what you had to do?
Let me, let me throw one additional fact in here that's probably going to make it worse in you guys' mind. I believe the ACC permit fees are going to go up.
Oh.
Well, and that's the whole point, and again, that's another part of the question, is that we got no, there's no control, I mean, there's no, there is no, they can be whatever they want them to be.
That's true.
That's right.
That's true.
So if they want to have a $100 fence permit fee, they can have a $100 fence, whatever they want the fee to be, they can have it.
And I guess I still have a little difficulty, what are you trying to say? That because they have fees and inspect the aesthetics, we should not have fees?
No.
And inspect for safety, and those kinds of issues?
My concern, my, what I'm trying to say is for the public, the citizens of Bella Vista, having to pay double for something.
I understand that, but I need to know what your fix is, I guess, what, what are you suggesting we do?
That's why I brought it up, Mr. Mayor, was for the council to review the matter and discuss it, and determine if there is a fix, and I.
Okay, okay, so what other information?
Or as in Mr. Rooney's case, just forget it, it's fact of life.
What other information do you need to be able to come up with your fix? I'll, I'll try to figure out what the AC inspects for in most of these permit areas.
Does any other?
What else you need to know?
Well, I guess the first thing I need to know is, does any other council member have any concern or issue or question about what I'm bringing up? And if no other council member has any other question about it, or any concern about it, then I need to forget about it, I need to just let the issue die.
Maybe the next mayor can get rid of the ACC.
Maybe, maybe so.
Or make an effort in that regard.
There you go.
To eliminate some of what they're doing, for double. But I, my initial, just scribbling on the side, and I wouldn't say it's an unusual idea, we'd lose on this here alone about $21,000.
Well, I don't think that we would look at every item here, I think you'd need to look at a cost ratio, that which ones you think would help the, you know, the people out there, the citizens that feel they're paying a double fee and actually doing them. Because, you know, everybody that's out there campaigning is saying, you know, we need cooperation between the city and the POA, this may be one step for the city to, you know, effect some kind of a change that the people out there feel that's beneficial, that they're not paying double fees. We're just looking at the numbers, you know.
This is not, but this is not a POA issue, though.
No, it's ACC, covenants all kind of blend together.
And I would.
Or a developer issue, that it is.
Yeah, technically it's Cooper.
And I, and I would say, how many people, as you said, you know, you know this whenever you buy a piece of property, or you buy a house in Bella Vista, you know that this exists. I don't know, haven't, it probably is not proper to ask a question of the audience at this point, but I would venture to say that there's probably not anyone sitting in the audience tonight that knew whenever they bought a house or piece of property in Bella Vista, that whenever they went to the city to get a permit to build a fence, that they're going to have to go to another private entity to get a, another permit at twice the cost of the city's permit.
I'm like Jim, it's not unheard of. I've got two kids in Omaha, Nebraska, two separate POAs, they do the same thing.
I would like to be concerned about the people of Omaha, Nebraska, but right now, the people of Bella Vista is about all I can take care of.
It's not uncommon. Any other comments, questions, any other information? How do you want to proceed with this? What's your concept or idea of proceeding? What do you want the staff to do?
Concept of.
Yeah, because.
Concept of proceeding, from my point, is, is, if it is an issue to the remaining, or to the other council members. Because I'm, I'm still on the clock until midnight, December 31st, and then it's, will be somebody else's issue.
Yeah, it's kind of deceptive, because under new homes you have $40,000, but you would only be giving a credit of 300 times 42.
That's if it stays at 300.
Well.
I think it's going to 5.
Then you may, in the, the change, you say, this is max, you can put a ceiling on them, too. I mean, if we go that, you know, they say, the credit's 300, if they go to 700, it's still 300.
Well, Jim didn't use the total of that, he said he, looking down quickly, he was at 21,000, we would lose.
Yeah, that's way more than that.
I know, I'm just looking at the numbers.
What is it you want the staff to do, what is it you're looking for? I'm lost as to what the next step is.
I'm just saying you're thinking that is there, I'm sorry.
Well, get a better, a better calculation of what the actual revenue loss would be, would be good to start at. In other words.
Based on what?
On the numbers versus what you're.
Pretty close to 21,000.
Well, based on where we give them credit for these numbers that are down here?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that, if that's what you want to do.
That's pretty close to 21,000, Frank, based on what's there.
Okay. We can do that, we can come up with the exact number. Exact number within.
Yeah.
Reason with the average numbers in there, because those average numbers are going to.
I might just ask that our city attorney review whatever, if there are any ordinance or legal remedies to deal with this matter.
The council can set the permit fees that the city charges, and so if, if you want to reduce them, and you want to have a logic behind the reasoning for doing that, you're certainly free to do that. You can't control what other people charge for private fees for private things, you can control what the city charges, and if you want to have a concept of how you want to base those fee permit charges, then you certainly can move forward with that.
Well, I don't, I don't know how it would apply in this particular situation, but for instance, a wrecker service, there are some services that are provided to cities that the city can set a.
Well, that's, cities can.
I know.
Regulate taxis, and regulate towing, and set certain rates and certain concepts, this is not one of those areas. I don't think we can mandate what a private POA, or HOA, or ACC charges along those lines. I would, I, I'm not going to say absolutely you can't, I would just need to look into it. I think probably the city would have the authority to license an ACC to operate in the city of Bella Vista and charge for that license. There's all kinds of things that could be done that would financially impact that relationship.
And I see you did that.
It's just how, just, if you have a concept of what you'd like to do, I'd be certainly happy to look into that and make sure that's something that we can do, and then draft something up for you to offer, and y'all can debate.
Sounds like a good plan for a work session next month. Let Jason do some homework on it, and.
Well, now, what?
He needs to, he needs.
What do you want me to homework?
He needs what you want homework on, see, that's the same problem with the admin staff, I mean, we'd be happy to do but, but what is it we're going to do? And we end up back in this same discussion we had here, we had it last Monday night, we ended up about the same point, we've had a week now, we're back at the same point, we're going to discuss it. What is it you need in order to discuss it?
Personally, I think we should just sit tight and discuss this at a work session, because right now we're, we are not in any position to do anything with anything.
That's right.
What do you want presented at the work session? What, what's going to happen that you can't discuss now, that you're going to know a week from now?
Well, we're pretty well looking at what they charge, and we're looking at what we charge, and the only thing that we would be, within our business to do, would be to reduce our city rates by a percentage to make up for their greed, that's all I can tell you, but, I don't know that would be who of us to do that. Why would we, why should we do that?
Just allow them to charge more.
So you have all the information you need, you're just ready to discuss what it is we could do or couldn't do, is that what I'm hearing? You have all the information you need.
As far as the financials, that's not going to change, this, this is what their fees are, this is what our fees are.
Not limiting at financial information, any information, you have everything you need, and you're ready to discuss what we can do.
No, I'm not.
What do you need? That's what I'm trying to get.
I need time to digest this.
You're not going to get any information unless you tell us what you need. It's not going to be any different next month than it is tonight.
I need time to think what I need.
Right?
Yeah, I, I need time to digest this.
Yeah, it's, it's not a matter of great urgency.
And probably when the price of a fence permit goes to $500, it will, the reissue will resolve itself.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is get what the ACC inspects for in those various things, talk to Jason a little bit, and see if there's any way to cap, control.
Bring them in.
Do whatever to the ACC, similar to the, the areas that were mentioned, that the city can do. I doubt we're going to come up with anything, but we'll look, and then give you guys time to think about what you want to discuss next time. Is that what I heard?
Works for me.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions on that particular item?
No, sir.
Last item on the agenda. Moving on to the best part of the agenda, meetings and announcements. Planning commission for the work session for November has been canceled. The regular meeting of the planning position for December has been canceled, there's nothing on the agenda as of right now, so as of right now, those meetings are canceled. We will have a city council work session scheduled for Thursday, December 4th, primarily the budget, I'm 99% sure. We'll also have a special meeting before that city council work session to take on the trash costs for 2015. The next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, December 15th, 6:30, right here, same time, same place?
December 8.
Oh, the city council work session scheduled for Monday, on your list it says December 15th, that should be December 8th. So the regular work session for the month of December is the 8th, so we're having a special one on the 4th, a regular one on the 8th. By that time, I would hope that we're through the budget, and everybody has their questions answered, and we're ready to approve it on the 15th, so expect as much time as you want to spend on the budget, the 4th and the 8th. Meetings adjourned.